The day that the Civil War started. And with that, the first thing that we're going to talk about is if anybody has future agenda items.
Did you, do we do real call?
Oh, we didn't do real call.
Okay, and Commissioner Rock, Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Nocita.
Here.
Commissioner Mom.
Here.
And Mayor Healy.
Here.
Does anybody have any future agenda items?
Yes.
Uh, finish your, it says on the green sheet.
I have a couple I'd like to discuss. I'm glad Tony's here, because the first one is a small question research project that may lead to a much bigger one. Now get some background on it. Doug appointed me to the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition meeting. The last meeting of that I went to, there was the representative from EGE who showed us a document which was a study for determining eligibility for the buildings within the Blue Heron Site to the National Register of Short Places. Do you know, do we have a copy of that, the one that PGE generated?
Not done or whatever.
Okay, I'm checking with the shipper, I don't know if, you know, it's confidential. I mean, as a business system confidential. But the, the basic conclusion is that they are. Which raises a number of issues as far as how we as a city exercise our municipal powers on the site. Because I think we will confront a question as to how, you know, we want to see the site redeveloped and to what extent we are interested in using our municipal authority. The small question I have is, I recall in Oregon law that typically it takes owner consent to have a municipality designate something on a, on a short list or landmark list. I don't know to the extent which that extends to publicly owned properties and whether that statute is just for private owners. And I'd like to get that question answered. And then the second question jumping from that would be, you don't need a publicly, a public body, a government level jurisdiction like a county or, you know, the state government or the federal government to designate something as a national landmark or on the local landmark. Would the US trustee be the US government to the extent that Oregon City could list those sites within the Mill District as historic on our landmarks inventory? So the bigger question after that is, so do we want to do that? But that's a much bigger discussion. And what I would wonder if we could maybe by like next week's commission meeting, get an answer to that kind of initial pair of questions as to whether, does the requirement in state law for owner consent extend up public bodies? And if that's the case, is the US trustee a public body or a bankruptcy estate, a public body within that definition?
Yeah, you know what, what strikes me Jim though is that the trustee probably isn't the owner. In fact, I know legally they're not the owner. And I'm, I'm thinking this is probably a question we could ask the city attorney's office and give a pretty quick answer to.
Who's the owner? I thought the, I mean, now that, once you sign a bankruptcy, your property becomes part of a bankruptcy estate.
That's right. And that estate is under the jurisdiction of the bankruptcy court, but the principal, the ownership has to be sorted out through the proceedings. So the ownership, for example, under top, under chapter seven is going to be whoever the successful purchaser is on the property. Right now, the ownership is under jurisdiction because it hasn't been settled. I would just see that the principal owner is probably going to be the major sixth lien creditor. So right now, if they had to declare who the owner was.
That's, that's, that's a question I think we need to answer because I don't know that the property is ownerless right now. Blue Heron doesn't exist anymore, so Blue Heron doesn't own the property. But I'm not sure that the fact that, that it's in an estate now means that nobody's.
Blue Heron's still incorporated, so.
Well.
They're not operating, but, but believe me, I'm a practice thing from tail to stem looking for some answers because we have these utility claims down there.
Yeah.
And we have ongoing leaks on the property that I'm going to be reporting to you later tonight. As well, I'm trying to nail this down. I'm actually going to meet with the trustee tomorrow. I gotta, I just got notice today that I can see that person tomorrow afternoon around four o'clock. So if commissioners have any questions, I'm going to get to this in my reports. If you have any questions like that one that I can pose to the trustee, I would be happy to do that tomorrow. If you can email them to me as soon as possible and I'll thank most of the ones you just asked. I don't think the trustee is ultimately going to be the person that can declare who the owner is. I think that'll actually be part of the court judgment about who the owner ultimately is.
Well, this, this becomes, okay, that's the fact that we're going to look into that with the trustee answering my questions.
So I want to answer the first question.
Sure. Commissioner Rock.
Oh wait, wait, I thought you were going to continue.
Oh no.
No, because I had some others too. I emailed over one today, this morning, a proposal to create a new staff position called the Director of Community Affairs. I, Doug wrote me an email suggesting I propose that as a future agenda and I'd like to do that. I, I did plan to raise it in the context of the budget hearings, but if, if we could make it an agenda item for next two, for next Wednesday's meeting. And I don't mind launching the discussion then.
Are we having future agenda items for work sessions or commission?
Commission meetings.
Commission meeting.
So I think I can take Doug's email as a head nod from him.
I have no problem with putting it on for discussion.
Okay, anybody else?
The net here.
And the last agenda item I had, it was like very late in the day, so maybe no one's ever even seen it, was I sent out an email regarding how city commissioners fit into the city's email policy. And I'd like to have the discussion about that when we have the city attorney president too, so. I'd like to put that on next Wednesday's agenda.
This is a.
Yeah. That's all.
Commissioner Rock.
I'd like to take a look at the Public Works property, well, the property they were thinking of moving to, that four, five, six acres on John Evans, and rezoning it back to original zoning specifications. Let's get that in here also, you want to rezon. The Public Works property where they have trucks and things parked and the things you're moving to, rezoning that back to not original, but some amended zoning changes.
Well, that's a, I'm going to look at that, that's a big process.
I know. But it needs time.
I would have a friendly amendment to that. That site is, got a lot of golden white oaks on it. And I would like to, as part of that discussion, have a discussion about creating a goal five inventory list or add to our goal five inventory, golden white oak in the city. So I think that dealt with with that proposal.
I'd just like to mention a couple of things, going back to Commissioner and Nocita's idea about this position. To remind you that when we went through our retreat process, the budget document you have there today does not include a position like that because the budget document you have in front of you is targeted at the goals that you came out of that process with. And so if there are new developments like that, I just want you to realize that's why it wasn't in there. Because I tailored it to what the goals were at the time, which are actually at the printer. And I hope to have the books to hand out any day now.
The budget books?
The budget book's there. But what's at the printer currently that we don't have back yet is your goals report for your goals booklet. And we print one of those each year when we update your goals and we should have that by the next meeting. And then also to let you folks know that one of your goals was to decide where to build regarding the Public Works facility. And we have that scheduled. Nancy, do you know when that work session is coming up? Or the, decide where to build? I thought it was first part of June.
June 7th.
June 7th. So June 7th, there will be a presentation from the Public Works Department on kind of where you've been with this project, how you got where you are and where you might want to go in the future. And you probably want to make sure that you get all that information and kind of make sure you know where you want to go before you, you can discuss rezoning, but before you actually take action, you want to try to settle that question. So you don't, or close all your options. And the timing could be important too depending on how soon we can move out of that facility into the next one. So I just wanted to throw those ideas. Or if you'd like, we can include the potential rezoning as part of that discussion in June around the whole topic. But if you'd rather talk about it sooner than we can, it just will be maybe without some of the information that we'd be able to. Your call.
So I guess, what do we have on the agenda then that you're, we're adding for next Western?
I think the only thing on it is the administrative position.
And the administrative email policy.
Yeah, and the administrative email policy.
Was there something about a job description? Is that what?
That's the first thing they had.
Um, mine is that President, Tuesday I was speaking with the optimist today and I had the chance to talk to her afterwards. And you had this discussion about having a joint board meeting to discuss what the potential is for the jobs area that surround the college. And she was very receptive to us having a joint board meeting. And she would like to schedule, give a schedule. Enough of the dance, all the staff preparations that they might want to do or that we might want to do and be incorporated. And I was going to suggest that I go ahead and contact the chair of the, of the, of the Board of Clackamas Community College to see if we can arrange a joint work session. Generally, do Tuesday evenings work? Okay, I don't know what their normal date is, but it'd probably be a special session in any case. If I got mods on that, I'll go ahead and proceed.
Yes.
The other future agenda items.
Just add to your proposal. In addition to the employment areas, I'd like to propose that we also include a discussion of Concordia's approach.
Well, actually, we discussed that. She said that they're not in a position to discuss that at all until we find out how this bond manager goes. She also stated, our total thirteen institutions that are asking to apply from this community college to see if they can work out some kind of a joint educational program. Apparently, there's, there's several proposals that are out there. Yeah, I, I think that's being mature until the bond manager passes. And secondly, actually, the joint, the joint, joint discussion on our part, that's a joint discussion between Concordia and Clackamas County. I don't know why we'd get involved in such a, that discussion would work. I don't like to broke it. And with that, we have our one, one item, the site manager report is the end of the Oregon Trail site and visitor center. The IGA, which is due, I guess. City Mayor.
Scott Archer has a report for you and we'll see if we can get some clarification on where the commission wants to go on this important issue as we get through it.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Actually, to clarify what we're, we'll be talking about are both related to the End of the Trail Site and the Visitor Center, but actually two, two separated topics or two distinct topics within that. And one is the, just the general discussion about the future planning, decision-making process for the End of the Oregon Trail Site. I'd like to go over that first and then let you deliberate or discuss that or whatever you want to, however you want to talk about that. And then, secondly, I'd like to talk about the Visitor and Information Center, the arrangement there. That was, this is being brought back to you specifically requesting the commission to have, have some discussion about this prior to the upcoming summer season. So, so first, the, just the, the general End of the Oregon Trail Site. The, at your goal-setting retreat, what my recollection is of that was that you, you agreed to address that decision-making process in the coming year, not necessarily, not necessarily make a firm decision about what the future will be, but, but at least to address and put into place some type of, of a process so that we can begin to look at what, what the future is going to be and then look at that potentially for maybe for next year's goal-setting or next year's budget cycle. So just, just to kind of let you know, there's no, the, the timing is such that this is, this is well in advance, but we want to, wanted to get this back on your, on your plate so that it at least kind of stays fresh and current in your minds as much as we can with all the other things that, that you're having to address. So just as a, a very, very brief refresh or an overview, last year, we completed a process that concluded in, I think it was in October, and you received a report from AMS, the consultant firm, that spearheaded the process. There was also the, the task force related to the End of the Oregon Trail Site. And that report, and, and I apologize to the two new commissioners since then, I, I guess I should have checked with you in advance of this meeting. Have you, have you both seen the report?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mom, did you ever get that report in any form? Okay, we'll make sure that we get that too. It's a, it's a report called the End of the Oregon Trail Vision and Planning Study. I'll make sure that we, that we get that, you know, in your hands. The, it was a pretty in-depth process and, and analysis and then a recommendation. And then what I'd like to do is just go over very, in a very abbreviated way, the, the recommendations that were in that report, just to again kind of refresh you and it may, may help you with your conversation here a little bit. There were three main program areas that, that came out of that recommendation. They were a Visitor Center, a Heritage Park, and a Festival, Festival and Event Site. And the idea was that these would be done in a multi-phase, multi-year approach. Again, these are the recommendations that were in, in the AMS report. The first, the Visitor Center, the, the idea there was just to continue to operate and to build on that, that success. The Visitor Center continues to operate, has continued to operate. That service was, was not, was not discontinued as, as the interpretive site has, interpretive center has been. And then to build on that success and eventually over time, potentially increase some of the offerings. There's some discussion about something called the Taste of Clackamas County and some, some bigger retail types of function and so forth. The second of the three is the Heritage Park. And that premise or that idea is to have a, to add to, update and increase the interpretive signage and to create a self-guided outdoor walking interpretation of the End of the Oregon Trail. The estimated cost of doing that by the consultant was approximately $1 million. Going back to the first one, the Visitor Center, really wasn't an estimated cost because that's already funded program through Clackamas County's Tourism Development Council. And then finally, the third, again, the, the Festival and Event Site, which would be the, the longer-term phase, would be to enhance, enhance the site with green spaces and event types of facilities, things such as amphitheaters and, and facilities of that nature. So that over time, you could have, in addition to the Visitor Center and the self-guided interpretation, that you would have onsite actual events programming. And there's even discussion in this about, over time, hiring some program staff to actually program events and festivals and things of this nature. And the, the estimated cost for the, for that third, third phase was about $1 million also. And these are, those are rough numbers. The, kind of the big, the big issue that, that I think is potentially going to be one of the more difficult decisions is, is regarding the buildings, the current buildings on site. And again, except for the Visitor Center, which is actually only about 10 years old at this point. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. So take that out of this part of it, but the, the rest of the interpretive buildings and what the report gave you were two basic options. And those are, one, to renovate the existing structures. The estimated cost of doing that with all of the deferred maintenance is, is about $1.3 million. And that would add about 25 years of additional lifespan on, onto those facilities. The second option was to, to do demolition and the cost of that was $150,000. And again, these are just estimated costs. We are, I want to remind the commission that the city is currently, continues to be responsible for, for the site, the ground maintenance as well as the buildings maintenance. The, as you know, the interpretive center portions of that are not open. So the, the maintenance isn't things like custodial and things like that, but it's more you pay some, some utility costs to keep a minimal amount of heating and, and that type of thing so that you keep ventilation, obviously. And then if there are issues that come up that we may deal with, for example, we're already looking at one, one significant issue, which is potentially is the roofing on those structures that may be a little problematic depending on the timeline and what the commission wants to do and, and that type of thing. So moreover, what we're dealing with is the, is the Visitor Center facility. There are some ongoing maintenance items. The, the county and its, and its contractor do kind of the day-to-day cleaning and things of that nature, but we do the big stuff. If, if the heating or ventilation system goes out, if a door is broken, these are things that we've actually kind of dealt with. And then again, through our Parks Department, we're doing the ongoing grounds maintenance and we're also cleaning the restrooms onsite. So that's kind of, you know, a very, a very condensed snapshot of, of that report. I refer you back to the, to the report again to, you know, look at the specifics of those things. But what we were, again, what we were bringing this forward for was more just to, again, put that on your plate and also to hope to begin to have the, the conversation with you of how you would like to determine a plan for decision-making on this site over the, over the next year, which again was, was one of your goals, was to hopefully come up with, with a, a plan at least to, of how you want to make that decision and move it forward. So before we move on to the specifics of the Visitor Center contract, I want to stop there, if that's okay with the commission, and let you ask me any questions or, you know, kind of see how you want to go with that.
Mine's just a comment. I've gone to a couple of the events. There's been several that have been staged in the evening times at the Visitor Center. Both, both very good events, I enjoy them. There's some programming going on in addition to it being a Visitor Center, I know that. I don't know how often they are, but I know I went to a couple of them.
Couple of things. In terms of the AMS report, my opinion hasn't changed on that. Anyway, you know, the uses that are listed there are the uses we've always used before. So I think that's, that's what we have to work with. I guess one of the things that I want to say is, you know, this is a very complex issue, situation and, and different buildings, different things. But to me, one of the things that I was concerned with during the original, during the first, the closure of the, the Interpretive Center and all the discussions that happened since then about the Visitor Center itself. And my main concern throughout that time was how does CHP change? And honestly, I think that we drug it out so long that now we can't make a change even if we want to, because it would actually hurt more than it would help. So I, I, I wish, I, I wish then some of those issues were raised originally, that it would have been tackled. But in the same, in the same respect, what has changed? And I will tell you what has changed. I think, you know, my main concern was when CHP changed its name to Historic Oregon City, would it be more than a name change? Would it be an action change? And I think there has been. So my feeling, you know, the, the Interpretive, the, the Visitor Center is so important. It's more important now than it ever has been because it's one of the only things open in town. And what has CHP done to change? And they have, there's a site committee that has been formed. You know, all the discussions that have happened over the past months about, or there's the Tourism Council and Tourism in general and all these sites have kind of, all these different groups have kind of formulated into a position where they are working, quite honestly, more together than they ever have. And so, you know, we can't, we can't stop that from continuing. There's still things that need to be worked on. But, you know, right now, Historic Oregon City as an organization, I think, is, is really working as hard as they ever have to, to make it better. And so I really see that happening. I feel that, I mean, if you look down their website, it's changed. And, and it's, it's acknowledging Oregon City history or, or Historic Oregon City as a broader sense rather than just a couple sites. And so, and that's a project that they're working on drastically in the last month or so and are continuing to do. So I think a lot of progress has been made. And so I don't really have too much, well, I have some concerns still, but what's going on at the Visitor Center is good. And, you know, it may not be perfect, but it's more perfect than anything else we're going to figure out right now. And so, you know, that's, that's just, that's just where we have to, have to be. When we get into conversations about the Interpretive Center building or the, the site as a whole, that's going to be a whole different, a whole different discussion. And so, you know, that may not come in the really near, near future. And even in terms of our goal setting, it's been put back a little bit. But I guess one of my concerns with the site is the same concern that I have with some of our empty sites around Oregon City. Not the city-owned sites, but there's sites that are closed down and people know it, it's very well-known. And so how do we make sure that these sites are protected and utilized? And so in terms of the Interpretive Center, you know, there's not going to be a fiscal plan for that building for a while. So is there a way that we can at some minimal use utilize that building? And one of the, one of the topics that has come up is, so when I'm, when I'm talking of the, 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 the building being possibly used a little bit more, I'm talking for maybe very specific events where maybe there's a collaboration of multiple sites or the entire, you know, the entire site group itself. So if, if there's a citywide event going on in the, in the city and since it's very easy to publicize that as a, a starting. and since it's very easy to publicize that as a, a starting place, how do we, how do we get people then to these other sites? How do we teach the history um, in Oregon City that we can't access right now? And um, I think that there's a couple of ways that we could utilize at least the last wagon building in some minimal event use type of a situation where maybe on weekends that there's a big event going on in the city, that that's a place to display information about all the attractions in Oregon City. Whereas a real collaboration between these groups to pull something off, it wouldn't be where there's, you know, um, people to be there responsible for it. Um, so not on any, you know, regular, you know, maybe we talked, you know, maybe in the summer, maybe there's a couple um, you know, set programs that all these heritage sites work together on and, and helps them in that building. Just so a way that it looks like we're making progress, a way that people know that we haven't forgotten what is there, where it's letting it rot, that, that um, we're making progress to go in a new direction, but be very careful about um, what that says in terms of ownership of the building. And um, because when we have a discussion about what that building's going to be and who makes the decision, that's going to be a, a pretty lengthy discussion. But um, I, I don't know if there's anything else to say on that. I, I think we're making a lot of progress and um, and um, so I appreciate the work that um, all of you have done. Um, Gail and Dan especially too. Um, so I guess that's it on that.
There is, is Dan's very good. I believe it was one of the baskets, Helen Salisbury, we were having a discussion forming in uh, 2013, there's some kind of a major historic trails event uh, that's going to be occurring. There's a lot of interest there to make sure that, you know, the Oregon Trail is recognized and that effort, and so that we know about it. I think it's really important that we, at a minimum at this point, keep the visitor center open, but also that we see what we can do at that site, even also a temper- whether it's a temporary fix or whatever. Uh, or maybe a very major event that has a, might have a major draw on Oregon City. And uh, some of us are aware of it, but I, I don't know if the staff is, so. Anyway, um, um, I'm agreeing with you. I think, uh, I think we need to review this. This is a discussion, but it's not a decision point, but uh, I think from what I've seen, uh, there's some good work. I mean, does the city, do you want to say something?
Well, it sounds, it's a couple of things. What I think I'm hearing is that these groups have mobilized and are starting to have more productive discussions about where they want to go on the future. There's more cooperation there, and there may be some desire on the commission's part to let that process play itself out before you make a commitment on our direction. That seems to be the first thing I heard. The second one, I'm a little more ambiguous about. Miss Scott, I want to know, are you clear on, on the suggestions that have been made about using the building for certain events, and I'm not sure what those would be, but.
Well, yeah, I was actually going to ask a similar question before the commission concluded this discussion, and I just wanted to make sure I, that staff had a direction and um, the um, we, I, the one thing I, I want to make sure just to, I, I feel like the, an important reminder is I always have to look at things from the operational side of things, because my staff and I get to take care of things there. So um, we've been um, we can certainly, I think what we need to do is probably talk with, with um, Dan and, and the rest of the folks about, a little bit more about what those ideas are, and not just, not just these folks that are here, but the, the rest of the community that's at the table, the Site Plan Committee, I think it's called. Siting Committee.
There's been another group formed.
With the interest group that is looking at that site and uh, see if we can flush out the ideas. I just want to, my point was just simply that um, there are considerations about the facilities and those, as far as um, how do we physically deal with the buildings and, you know, that does generate some additional potential costs and that type of thing. So I want to kind of keep that one on the, on the top of the things to think about.
Um, to narrow that focus. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I was pretty vague in what I was talking about, but um, I'm not seeing it as of, uh, an event center that we, you know, um, that everyone's able to use on a regular basis. Um, so I'm not talking to that level, but I'm talking about in the, in the situation where um, maybe all the, the attractions and the museums in the city have gotten together for a weekend event, like perhaps uh, Spirits of Oregon City event, or um, where they're doing a cemetery tour coming up um, or on the state's birthday, you know, some, you know, maybe some key events where um, we can, you know, have a staff person there that is either, you know, figured out in some way that's paid by these groups or, or whatever. But I'm, I'm seeing it as a slow start, just so um, on events where we're bringing more visitors into the city that they're able to, to, to realize that that building's starting to be utilized in some small way. Um, and that, you know, so it starts something really little, um, like one event or something or two events, but just so it looks like we're tackling that. I, I just don't want to see the building sit empty every day all year round, and everyone knows that, and um, so.
And I'm, I just want to, you know, let, say that I'm, I'm supportive of those ideas. I think it, it is nice to look like something's going on there. I, I was just simply making sure that you understood that. We have to deal with some of the details and I guess so, my thought then to, to follow up with making sure I understand where we want to go, is that um, staff would have some of these continuing conversations and probably kind of talk about some of the potential types of events with the folks here in the room and, and potentially others as well, and then report that back to the commission, what, what maybe something that could work out or, or whatever, if that's, if that's acceptable.
Anything else from the city manager?
I think, Scott, did you get now the second part on the visitor center? There's two questions tonight, and you answered one, and there's still one to go, right?
So yeah, and that uh, leads into that second part of that with the um, the specifics of the, the arrangements for the visitor center. And I, um, you know, I'd just like to start out by saying that um, from my observations and what I'm hearing from, from the folks that I hear from uh, in general, that um, people seem to be pretty happy with, with what's going on at the visitor center. It's been a, been a positive thing over the last year or a little bit more, or whatever it's been since um, you know, things have, have changed and then kind of shifted gears. But um, the, the folks represented here, I, I think have, have done a really good job from my perspective. Um, what, the specific um, issue here at hand is, is just to follow up with you, the commission, and let you know the specifics of that arrangement. And um, uh, I believe Nancy put a uh, copy of the visitor center um, IGA with the county on your uh, on your D I S monitors, just to refer back to them again. I think, I think we've looked at this before. That uh, that document goes back to, it was um, approved in June of 2000. And um, has been in place since then, and it um, from the way it reads, it's, it's, it's a 20-year agreement unless either party decides to take some action to change it. What that document does is it spells out when that, when that facility was built. Um, it was built several years after the end of the trail center opened as a separate facility. Um, and that agreement spells out the arrangement between the city and the county. It was, it was built with some funding from both agencies. The, the way that it works is that the city actually owns the site and we own the building, but we have a specific arrangement for the management of the, of the building. It was built for the purpose of visitor services, which is what it's continued to, to serve as. And um, in this agreement, it, it um, authorizes Clackamas County to, to basically manage that facility uh, in the programmatic side of it. So we take care of the building itself, the big picture part of the building. But the programmatic part of it, the visitor services, the county is responsible for that. They, they have a funding source to do that, um, and they have continued to do that. Um, I think one of the questions that had come up was the arrangement with the subcontractor, which is CHP. The uh, under the, I think it's on page four, under ownership and occupancy, it called your attention to item number four. Um, that paragraph pretty well, pretty well spells out the county's um obligation, but also their right to how, how they manage that operation. And, and it, and it says uh, that the county may subcontract the visitor services. So that's exactly what they're doing. The, the contract is, is essentially silent on telling the city what authority we have to tell the county who they can select or not. So um, my interpretation, as I read it, is, is silent on the matter, so it doesn't really tell us that we have the right to tell the county what, who they can select or not. In this particular case, I think, you know, as we've just discussed, I believe that the county is satisfied with the contractor they have in place right now. Um, as I understand it, the um, the visitor center numbers, the, the visits that they track have actually gone up, up over the last year, so they're seeing increase in numbers, even though the uh, end of the trail site isn't, is not open, they're still getting a lot of visitor center sites. There, I know they're trying to, to do some, in, in, in the absence of the fact that that site is uh, available for people to come to the interpretive center, they've tried to offer some things that at least give some visitors an experience, because a lot of people still show up looking for some type of end of the Oregon Trail experience, not realizing that it had been closed. And, and I think these folks have done a really nice job of at least giving some, on a much, much smaller scale, but giving some positive experiences to people that they're walking away from, from that feeling, at least, you know, adequately satisfied with that part of it. And then as far as just the visitor center stuff, that's um, from all appearances, from, as I understand it, uh, the county's happy with that. I have um, no uh, issues with that at all. In fact, I think it seems that they're doing a good job, but that's not really for me to decide, because we don't manage the visitor services there. So we do, as I said, we do manage the building and the grounds, but the visitor services is really up to the county. So my uh, my recommendation is that we really um, don't need to tinker with, with what's going on. If, if the commission is uh, is okay with that. Um, and I think in order to, to change anything there, we really have to revisit this entire IGA. And that's pretty substantial, and I don't know that we want to do that. Um, I know that certainly um, we don't have the staffing to, to, to address that, nor are we uh, nor do we have the, the funding stream that they have through the tourism dollars and, and also the expertise. I mean, that's what the, the county has a division specifically for visitor centers around the county. So um, in my opinion, uh, things are going well. And um, I don't suggest that we, that we change that arrangement, but uh, I know that the commission at one time at a, at least wanted to look at that arrangement and talk about that. And um, uh, you know, Dan and Gail are here, if you wanted to specifically address any questions to them, but I um, that uh, the, the agreement to run the services are actually between the county and their contractor, which at the time is CHP, so I can't even really speak to you about any of the specifics of that. I, I, I'm not sure when their contract runs through or, or how long or what have you, but um, I don't uh, I don't think that I would suggest any changes at this time, so.
By the end, do you have anything to say at all? Just, I don't know if you had any thoughts that you wanted to share with us in terms of the, I mean, we, we had this before, you, you came, just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak if you wanted to. Come on, come on up and you have to, we record this stuff.
Mayor and Commissioner before, while you guys are kind of getting your places there, one thing I did, uh, meant, that I meant to mention that I didn't um, is that uh, just as kind of a final piece of my comments, is that we're, we're having can, um, kind of continued conversations with the county. Not to say, I didn't mean to imply that we have no interest in, you know, the operation of the visitor center. We do, but it's, it's really the, the county's arrangement with the contractor. But we are meeting, um, Terry and I are meeting this Thursday with um, with Danielle, the, the manager of that uh, of the, of the visitor center operation for the county, and also I think one of the county's deputy administrators. Just, just, that's just an indication to you that we are, you know, we, we want to manage that relationship and, and we want to make sure that things are working for everybody, because you know, the county, uh, the county and the city have this IGA, and, and we are continuing to discuss with them and, and we'll, we'll know if there are any other challenges that, that we should be aware of.
We do actually interview yourself. In your case, if you actually say what your position is.
I'm Danielle from the Little Clackamas Heritage Partners, Historic Oregon City, and I'm the fiscal officer. And taking on some of the little things. So um, let's see. So when CHP kind of dissolved, well, not dissolved, CHP didn't, but all the staff were laid off, then um, Kathy and I were there. And um, I just did the books, and then Kathy did visitor services. So then we kind of um, collaborated together and then, I don't know, things, Dan, worked with Dan. And um, we had Danielle come down because, you know, we have visitors that come for the End of the Oregon Trail, and they were getting so upset, and so then what do we do? So we brought in some of the displays and then kind of built up the program. Keep, because we kind of are in the front lines of the visitor. And so what do we give them? How do we hang on to them till we decide what we can do with the site? I mean, we don't want to lose our End of the Oregon Trail guests, because they do go to the elevator, they go to Main Street, and so we felt like we wanted to hang on to them. Well, Danielle came down and met with us and we kind of talked to her, because, you know, it was different. And the contract that uh, we have is old, is the one you have, 2000, and it's Oregon Trail Foundation, and now all these changes. And she encouraged us to write a business plan and build on the successes that we have had. And so I think she is very happy. It was, uh, visitor services was never meant to be a standalone operation. And so um, you know, we brought in a retail, and people are staying, and you know, the advantage now too is our community. The people that live here are coming on a regular basis. Is that okay? Okay, and um, so I'm back in my office sometimes. And so anyway, um, they're making candles, they're bringing their kids, they're taking walks, having picnics, and we love the city, uh, taking care of the grounds now and everything. It's, it's just nice. And I, so my main, my one thing I wanted to say was it would be nice to open the wagons up and do more for the summer, because if we, we have a way, we can do it without costing any more money. And then giving, hang on to those visitors. Give them as much as we can as soon as we can, because they are coming. And every year that we're closed, you know, when are they going to stop coming? And that's really all I want to say.
Are there any liabilities for opening up the wagons and, to whom are those liabilities? Who's responsible for any liabilities in that game?
Liabilities such as, we need to. Oh, we have, we're still um, insured.
And are you, are you, are you anything going on with wagons as well?
I'm still, we're fully insured.
Uh, Dan Fowler, Oregon City. I just wanted to take a moment and um, uh, thank the commission, uh, thank Rocky, especially publicly, for his leadership in the site committee. And there has been a change. I appreciate your words earlier. Um, you know, we uh, venture along history, but there's a lot of people that care about history in, in the city, and they, they stayed together, they've dialogued, kind of know each other better. Uh, they're working together with a purpose to help each other. We all have a goal to get our museums back on their feet. It's pretty simple. It's going to take a lot of work, and it'll take a lot of time working together. Uh, I appreciate um, you know, and I look forward to working with Scott and you as a commission to really putting practical steps together to, to do some of those things. Um, it's not a time for pie in the sky, it's a time for just as, being as practical and as caring as we can be. And uh, so uh, we do appreciate, and I really appreciate Gail and Kathy and, and all the staff, they have done a, just a phenomenal job. They're on the front lines, they're seeing those people every day, and people are coming, you know, people come in every day. You know, people come every day, they don't know about our problems and issues. You know, they just, they're just traveling the trail, you know? So it's incumbent upon us to be as ready as we can be for them when they're here. And that's really an important charge. So I just want to thank these gals for all the work and the effort and their enthusiasm and their vision for what they want to do. And look forward to working with you guys and the staff on just taking some, the steps that we can take. Our mantra with Gail and Kathy is, just so you know, is whatever we do, we do not want it to add to the cost to the city. We know that your place is full and that money is short and that time is, you know, times are tough. But that's the, that's the situation we're operating under. But I really look forward to, to the next few months, just trying to do whatever we can, but doing it together in cooperation with the other museums.
That's the other mantra we have. We're stronger together than.
Definitely. So thank you.
Any other items? I don't, I think, are there any commission comments beyond what we've done here?
Well, I would like to make one comment. I have been down to the interpretive center and I think you guys have done an amazing job of all the things that you've done down there. My granddaughter loves it, it's wonderful. Thank you.
With that, I guess we're over here.
Are you an attorney? I thought you had the city manager report on the agenda.
Well, I, directly now, is there something else you already said? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, pardon me.
Regular report. So I wanted to give the commissioners a little bit of an update on Blue Heron. As I said, I learned mid-morning that I would have a chance to meet with the trustee tomorrow. Some of the issues, it's such a rapidly changing site. There's new disturbances every day. Since I spoke to you last, we found out we have significant water repair costing us about $500 a day in water. And Ms. Murmer reminded me that, well, that's how much water they would be paying for if they were paying for it, which isn't necessarily exactly what we're getting billed for. But nonetheless, we have treated water going down a drain there somewhere. There's a leak in their infernal system, we're not sure where it is. Our crews, even though it's private property, our crews have been down there trying to assist them and locating. They've got some senior employees that they've called back that have years of experience that know where the system is. What I'm finding out is there have been a lot of things done on that system with their underground housing that I'm not sure, I want to say this, I'm not sure we would do that today. And I'm not sure why it was done then. And I'm not even sure if all we could, if we could ever say that we've recovered water over the years that we should have been recovering payments for. There's just a lot of questions. We're investigating it more now. But I'm going to bring our public works director with me tomorrow when I meet with the trustee because I want her to be able to give them some details about what we've encountered down there. Now, one of the other concerns I have, and it's one thing to want to be paid for our utility bills that the public has to reimburse us, somebody hasn't paid for that. So that's money going away from our citizens. The other concern though, that's maybe more of an emergency matter is what to do about fire protection? Because we can't simply shut it off like we would in a normal situation. If you've got a leak, we shut it off, you find a leak, fix the leak, turn it back on. Or if you have non-payment, we shut it off and there's a lot of risk there. Well, this is a big site, so there's chemicals on the site, there's lots of combustible materials on the site, there's combustible buildings on the site. So we've been working with Clackamas Fire to try and come up with it. They've got a plan that they're working on. I'm going to communicate some of their concerns to the trustee tomorrow as well. One of my other concerns is these chemicals. What's happening to them, who's monitoring them? Are they dangerous? All of those kinds of things. Now, they spoke, they have certain placards on them, but I want to make sure that the fire department is comfortable with what's happening there regarding those chemicals.
Can you ask me a quick question while you're on the subject of fire hazards? You know, I live right above the mill, so walk down and look on it every day. That's right. The, the old tripping cyclone thing, it has, there's a big outdoor pen where mountains of woodchips would be stored. And it's, it's, there's a sizable amount of woodchips there still. Which, you know, if we're in August, not now, but in August, it'd be in, I'm wondering if that could be included, getting rid of all those woodchips as part of the safety plan.
The, the fire department actually has a fire marshal has jurisdiction over that. And so that's who we've been working with through our public works department to get Clackamas Fire Marshal to insist on a plan that goes into place. My concern is that in bankruptcy, and Jim, you know this from your early exposure to the practice, in bankruptcy, many times you have this eight-legged creature and it's doing this. And no one is accountable for what's happening. And, and that's why I want to make sure we communicate with the trustee as clearly as we can about what our concerns are for the safety on the site. And ultimately, the court has jurisdiction, but somebody's going to inherit this problem. Some landowner, whoever the top bidder is, is going to end up annoying, having this. And my, my position with the trustee is to try to get as much information to them as early as possible so that that information can be distributed to all of the potential bidders. So that they will know what they're getting and what our expectations are as a community, that it's safe. That brings up another item, is the security on the site. We've been told that they have some onsite security, but I want to make sure that that's spelled out. The creditor, Wells Fargo, like any creditor, has an objective of spending as little as possible. And I'm okay with that as long as it's as safe as possible. And that's the part that I'm going to be there tomorrow to try to trumpet that as a priority for our community. So that kind of covers my concerns with Blue Heron and what I'm going to be talking to the trustee about tomorrow. I will also, we've also communicated through our attorney with the trustee, some of the things the commission has discussed in their executive sessions, which I won't talk about here. But we've also communicated that to the trustee as well. And I will be giving regular reports to you in those executive sessions in the future about the outcome of that.
Did they have, when they were in operation, did they have anyone like Clean Harper's or someone that monitored and monitored their chemicals when they were running?
I don't know. I don't know. We're making calls to OSHA and DEQ as well, trying to find out who's going to monitor those chemicals and who's monitoring now. Does that matter? I don't, I don't know. Okay, so that's kind of what the sticky thing I wanted to talk to you about. And I don't like not having answers for you when I give you this information, but I, I'm telling you what I know and unfortunately, it's not as much as I'd like to be able to share. On a, on a more upbeat note, a year ago this week, I had a conversation with our IT manager, David Knoll. And David and I sort of unwittingly hatched a conspiracy to use technology to make our organization more effective and more efficient. And one of those things that, that generated from that was how we interface our business license with the rest of the organization. And you have been through that and the commission has been there, supportive of our efforts to streamline that process. And I've reported to you in the past what that, what, what those results have been. And I'm pleased with those so far. But we have another tool and we, we call it CRM, it's web-based citizen relationship management. And we're not quite ready to go to launch with this yet. But what it does is it allows you, I'll give you an example with this phone. It allows you to take an iPhone mobile application and make a complaint to the city, a city service area that goes streamlined through all one process and tracks that complaint start to finish. And instead of now, and all of you know this because at one point or another in the last 12 months, each and every one of you has had at least one complaint that you've brought to my attention. And I've dealt with it. And the way I deal with that, I get it from one of you, it goes to me, then to somebody else, and probably three or four more levels down before we get to who's going to solve the problem. And then it comes back the same way. And ultimately, it goes back to the citizen, we hope. And that's a pretty long, labor-intensive, inefficient way of dealing it. It's not uncommon, by the way, it's, it's actually pretty common. Cities and governments at local levels deal with problems that way. But it's not the best way. And so I'm reminded that last summer, William Jefford, who's not here tonight, but William came up to me and he had a picture on his cell phone of a sidewalk right up here by singer Hilcove that was leaking water. It had a crack in it, water was squirreling through it, and he thought it might be one of our water lines. So he emailed this photograph to me. And then I started the antiquated process I just described to you about what was causing that. And now, well, not now, but soon, when we get that mobile application in place, he will be able to do that from his cell phone and it will coordinate a GIS marker right to our system that will integrate through our existing GIS system. And then it will allow us to track that complaint all the way, start to finish, and report back to the citizen. So I'm kind of excited about this. I'm not really a techie at all, and Terry can confirm that. But I'm excited about technology, when we can use it to deliver better service. And so on the 20th, under my report, so I'm going to ask David Knoll to come and do a demonstration for you on what is, how this will actually operate. It's going to happen a little bit before we actually go live with all the components. But it also has a shopping, a shopping cart tool where you can buy online credit card payments for any item or service that's listed offers. Right now, we only have a couple of things you can do that with. So that's a change. It also has automated, automated phone payments that you can make by telephone, which you can't do right now. Building instructions then will be able to be updated directly from the field rather than at the end of the day, the way we do it now. So you'll be able to be out there with your Android, updating your building, assuming we have building, I hope we do someday.
Citizens can just, you know, use their phones to make complaints, then what are we here for?
You're still going to get those. You're still going to get those. And I am too, we know that that's going to be. But even if we do, you can enter them into the system though, it does help us close the loop. And so then some other things that are provided in this program. One of them is optional anonymous submissions, which, well, we like to get those too sometimes. Grouping multiple service requests into the same issue into one work order. So we're getting several complaints, more in place, you might not realize it because they could complain to one department, two or three different departments in the city because we have different locations and they might not know that. We don't have one system administrator, one central clearinghouse where that's coming. So I'm really excited about that one as well because it helps me manage better and helps our department heads manage better if we have that centrally located. We also think it'll help us track and understand the community's needs and priorities better. And we can report those results to our commissioners. And then supervisors will also be better able to track the productivity of their different work crews. We also think that citizens will tend to get a more immediate response and knowledge in a request and updates regarding the status that they can track online. And, you know, anything we can do like that to, I think, gain and enhance the trust that residents have in the services we provide, I think, puts us in a better position when we want to ask them to support something that the commission might put on the ballot or the school district or anyone else. So that's pretty exciting stuff. Next, I want to ask Nancy Kay if she could just a minute outline the process for choosing where to grow because Nancy, I think we weren't here, but Commissioner Roth brought up at the beginning of the meeting, the possibility of discussing rezoning some of that property. And I, I don't think we reached closure on that because I wasn't sure if you wanted to wait until after her presentation to do that or if you wanted to proceed. We're okay either way, but I wanted to see if Nancy would give us an outline of the process you envision using with the commission.
Well, what we understood to be the goal of the commission this year is to determine where the upgraded public works site should be. And so for that, we thought would be really good, helpful for the commission to go through the maps that we have created over the last few years to get where we are today. And so that we can find out what criteria the commission would be considering in selecting a site. And so that you have a really good understanding of what sites we've looked at, what our sort of conclusions were for them and why we ended up where we are today. And then would want to hear what other criteria, because obviously there must, there would be other criteria then to look for new sites. So that's the conversation we'd like to have at the June work session. But we would like to schedule, we might get done earlier, but we'd like to schedule the entire work session for that because it's a lot of information. And I really, this is a really important, it's a very important facility for the city. And it's unfortunately, it's really long overdue as well. So we've been, what we thought we were working on, if we're going to be changing courses here, we want to make sure that we have time to talk about it and not be rushing through the background and rushing through some of this discussion, which is really essential to get us off on the right foot. And so we'll have maps, we'll bring the maps that GIS has already created. We're going to make a few modifications to them so that they're a little easier to understand. And we'll provide a presentation to you on that.
Is that in June?
That's in June. And what, what I think that we will all understand together is it's very complicated trying to build another site, or building on the existing site. It's a, it's a big deal. And the complications are such that we could involve voter-approved bonds for funding. It could approve zone changes, it could approve, it could require a number of different things. So as, as the occupants of the site we have today, I would recommend that we wait to talk about rezoning until we have some better idea of if indeed we're not going to stay at that site, where we're going to go. So that the commission has a good, I think all of the discussion we'll have in June will help you understand some of the, it's just not a really straightforward conclusion. And so I would recommend waiting until after we've at least had that first work session to, and, and quite frankly, we might want to wait until we're actually finished with construction or finished with land use processes or something before we start rezoning because I wouldn't want you to take away or I want us to put us in a non-conforming zone when we don't have a solution yet for the public works center. So I would, that's my recommendation. Do you want me to add anything else, David?
I just, I want to know.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Can you restate that last part that you said you would consider rebuilding at what time?
Well, if you really wanted to make sure that everything is certain, it would probably be when you're, during construction, so that you've got your land use approvals.
Construction of your new.
Yeah, yeah, because with, until you have the land use approvals, the funding, the vote, if you need to do a vote, we may not go anywhere. And I would hate for us to be a non-conforming use there. If really, if we have just dead ends, we're coming across and we have to kind of go to Plan B even at that site. Because the site is in enough, it, it's so, it's so unacceptable for our staff, especially some of the, well, we want to do it too, we're also for each of you so that we can make sure that you understand kind of what the conditions are. So that was my, my add-on a little bit.
I understand your conditions are. When I had to get to that half door, it was like.
They're probably going to take you on the quarter tour in a second.
The second part, it's not two parcels? The part that's down on Center Street and the part on John Adams are separate parcels?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think there's actually several parcels in there, there's also the Armory site.
Okay. And then what are the typical zoning timeframe if you go to here?
Well, it depends, because if we pick a site that has a zone where we can, where we can be, then we don't have to do a rezone. If we pick a zone where a facility like ours is not allowed, a zone change can take, I think the minimum is, well, probably, minimum I would think of is like 120 days. And then depending on the process and appeals, et cetera, it can go on. I, I wouldn't want to predict how long it could go. Because hopefully, we wouldn't have those kinds of issues.
But you know, it's probably around 100.
Yeah. And then there's also the funding. If, if we go to a site where we need to build it all at once, then we probably, unless I wait for another 10 years to save up a whole bunch of money, we'd probably have to try to use some bonding and that would require a vote too. So there's another little complication that not to say it can't be overcome, but it, these are hurdles that, that are not, not easy.
Just to expand a little bit was that, you know, if we, if we identify another site in the city, so then we need to go acquire that site, it's probably contingent upon some type of a comprehensive plan and a zone change. Because realistically, public works is only allowed in general industrial and institutional zones. You're, you're realistically looking at probably purchasing another property. So once you purchase that property or get the ability to turn in an application to do that zone change and complan amendment that may be necessary, plus the map, the plan for the site, plus you have to come up with a detailed development plan for any buildings that are going to go on there. You know, you're looking at a, a approach, you know, pretty extensive public, public process to go through that, that, those entitlements. And then in the meantime, if you did change the existing site, which is zone, which is zoned institutional, which allows the public works facility or, or parks even, we, we applied this institution. which allows the Public Works facility, or parks even, we applied this institutional zone throughout the city on publicly owned properties. But if we change that to, let's say, I believe, I think it may have been R six originally, where now this facility becomes non-conforming. So in this meantime, something were to happen where there was some destruction of a building, or an improvement needed to make to a building, if you change that zoning to something where the Public Works facility is not allowed, you're in a non-conforming status, which would make it extremely difficult to go back and make those improvements that may be needed in the interim, until we're able to transfer the facility to another location. That'd be the one concern that we would have.
And do we still know what the middle is that we're looking at for acreage?
We're looking, when we, when we, when we've looked at the sites, the maps that we have, and what we're going to present to you guys is, we're gonna be looking at, I believe it's five to eight acre sites. And, and we can, depending on if we go up for multiple layer buildings, and that of course depends on the zoning code, too. Depends on how you can fit.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna say that for part of the broader discussion, Nancy.
I'll dissent a little bit. I would prefer that a discussion, not necessarily of rezoning, but of natural resources be placed on the agenda earlier. And my reasoning for that is, I read the, I think it was 2005 study on the Public Works, site selection process, and one of the things that struck me about the plan was that some of the natural resources that I think would, would, would should be under, part of the decision-making process for any development, as far as Gold Five resources, weren't considered, and for example, the White Oaks were not, I mean, they're not inventoried as far as the Gold Five resource, so they're not part of the decision-making process. So whatever future deliberations for that site, whether it's for a Public Works site or some kind of other development, and it's zoned away from something, you know, away from institutional, back to R six, some other, you know, residential classification, a mixed use classification, I would want future decision-making on land use approvals be done with the resources that are there, most probably, most prominently the White Oaks, but not exclusively, I have other issues on that site that I think should be considered for protection, not just there, but citywide. So whatever decision-making takes place in the future as far as zoning and zoning changes, and specifically regarding whether to keep Public Works there, I think should be made in the context of the natural resources that are there, that I think should be protected, you know, rezoning and municipal codes that aren't right now, most prominently the White Oaks. So my, my preference would be to have that discussion as a preliminary matter, because that's the resource base, before we start making decisions on, on zoning and land use.
So if I can summarize what I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing, is that your point is that regardless of whether it's Public Works or...
Anything else?
Anything else, that that natural resource component needs to be part of any decision about the property. And I, I don't think anybody, I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody, but I certainly wouldn't have any disagreement on that. But I think you're, you're better off having that discussion at the time that we have the broader discussion. And the reason for that is because while it may end up either way that we put that component in there, I think that it's gonna be important for everybody to have, try to develop a consensus about where you wanna go from there. Because you can still add that component in, and there's not gonna be a change of use there until this commission decides that there's gonna be. And so if you're concerned about any, I mean, we're not gonna be making any other land use choices there between now and June when we have that discussion with you. And so I think we could incorporate that into that broader discussion as a single, separate element. And if you are able to make a decision in June, because see, June is when we're gonna have the first discussion about how you got where you are, that probably won't tell you where you're gonna build, that's probably a series of decisions that you'll make. And so we could start that discussion in June with that premise in mind, that no matter what we end up with here, we're gonna try to provide greater protection on the site through natural resources. And then, when you're finally decided at the end where you're gonna build it, even if it's there or not there, you'll still know what kind of protection you want to impose on the site, and it may help.
But I'm not talking about imposing protections on the site. I'm talking about protection, imposing protections for natural resources such as Oregon White Oak, everywhere in the city that, that the Gold Five resource would apply to.
Okay, so you're talking about a citywide objective. Okay, I missed that.
So, is that soon with the commission?
You know, I don't know how early it is to discuss it, to bring this forward, if we need to bring it forward before June or not, but to put it on the agenda, I think is fine.
Before June, you say, or?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know if there's real urgency on it. And so that's, that's up to the commission whether they want to put it forward. And that's the question I'm posing, you know, he's talking about the citywide natural resource.
My, my proposal would be the first city commission meeting in May.
To discuss it.
Yes, discuss.
That's the first city commission in May?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like...
I don't know what you want from us, but we won't have a lot by then, because between then and then we have budget. Nancy, did we have something already, there's something already on May, what is that?
That's the first city commission meeting.
May keeps coming.
Oh, okay.
Specific.
Okay.
Some odds and ends I may form.
I just wanna make sure I know what the expectations are from staff.
The expectations are not to do an inventory yet. I think it's kind of the mechanism.
We also have a citizen who's been working on this very diligently, so he may be somebody that we want to turn to personally to introduce this subject.
Thank you. I guess it's...
Gordon Nelson.
Gordon Nelson.
Was there anything, was this part of this discussion?
No, I had...
I want him to finish that, in case, in case David Fraser had anything else, since I wouldn't be alone.
Also, our economic development manager, Dan Dratwalt, has been attending, well, it started today, was his first regional economic development meeting. And Dan, I thought maybe you could come up and give us a quick snapshot of what that's gonna be. And also, the commission, you probably recall, a few months ago, you suggested to us that we make some changes to our economic development page on the website, and Dan has made some of those changes. And I've been getting compliments from the business community about the changes, so I thought maybe he could highlight those for us.
The first thing is, in the macro region, there's been two communities dealing with regional economic development initiatives and planning. And one was the Regional Partners, which were all the various people in my position for the cities. And then there was the Greenlight Greater Portland Group, which was the private industry. And those two groups have formed one group called Greater Greenlight Portland. And I went to their first meeting today, and one of the first things that they're going to do is work on a regional economic development strategy, so I'll be involved in that. And then the other thing that David mentioned is our website, and economic development, and we've added a lot of information on the website. We have a lot of information there on the storefront grant program, and how you go through that process and apply for the grants. And we have a lot of urban renewal information, including a map of the urban renewal district, the urban renewal budget of last year, urban renewal plan, a report, and a status report that we did back in October. And also the futures reports that were done in 2004 and 2006. And then links to Main Street, the Chamber. And one of the links, we've added a really good link, it's called Demographics City Data. And if you click on that link, you can go to any region in the United States, including locally, and get all the latest demographic information. And then also we have links to this, the Small Business Center, Clackamas Community College, and that's a program where it's centered for small independent businesses if they wanna get assistance or a business plan, and a way to find sources of startup financing. And then the other link is to Clackamas County, they have a section called Tools for Business, and that's a direct link to a lot of different funding sources at the state and federal level. So work in progress, I think we're getting there.
Dan, I'm on the page right now, and I'm not seeing the link to demographic data, what's the link, name of the link?
I think if you go, it's called City Data.
Is it one of the links with the picture to the link?
It's at, it's at the bottom with one of those little paper clip.
So you have to go into the Business Resources link, and then it...
Yeah, there's like four different topics, there's four different headers in economic development. Business Resources is one.
Then it's the demographics from city-data.com?
Yeah, that's the one.
And then I have one last thing, ODOT is proposing to make some land changes in the Canema on, on 99, going through the Canema, and I believe the land changes are to go from four lanes to three with the turn, a center turn lane, is that correct? And they wanted to get some input from us, and so I want Nancy to record you just briefly on what they're proposing. We've had some complaints about traffic control, as you know. And so Nancy Heps been communicating some of those complaints to ODOT, and this is a measure that I think they believe will help traffic calm into the neighborhood, so.
And I must preface this with, it's not a dumb deal. Every year, ODOT has an annual preservation, pavement preservation list of projects, which is pavement reconstruction. And on their list of potential pavement preservation projects this year is McLaughlin Boulevard between 10th and Canema. And we've talked to them in the past about making that, rather than changing the four-lane section to a three-lane section, which would be two through lanes and one turn, center turn lane. And they have performed some preliminary traffic study on that, and the findings so far look good in terms of capacity and operations. And so they've asked for some, they've asked whether or not the Public Works Department supports them pursuing this. And I do plan to send a letter, and I know with ODOT, they do have opportunity for public involvement once they've selected their projects, and I have already sent an email to the Canema Neighborhood Association to let them know about this. And the benefits are, in terms of in the Canema area, will be to reduce the crossing distance if you're a pedestrian. Right now, there are four lanes to cross, and there would be three. And another benefit to multimodal is they will be able to create wider shoulders so that you could use it for a bicycle, where there's existing pavement available. So it's just, their staff is looking at it, they're sharing with, with us to talk about it. And then, once they determine what their actual budget is and what this would cost, we'll get a better sense of if it's a real project. And there will be opportunity for public involvement at that time.
Good questions. Nancy, several months ago, you and I and David had a discussion about writing a letter to ODOT about having the stretch of 99 with Canema designated as a special transportation area. I saw your letter to ODOT, I've never seen a response from ODOT to that letter.
They have responded, and I believe I conveyed that to the Neighborhood Association. They have, they, becoming a special transportation area is something that is decided by the Oregon Transportation Commission, and it's quite a long process you have to go through. Because we're gonna be updating our TSP, we were, we incorporated a part of the scope of work to start introducing that concept and looking at whether or not we, that stretch of the highway would, would conform to many requirements of the STA, so that's kinda where we're at right now.
Could I send you forward that letter of response from ODOT to the commission?
I don't think we got a letter, I've got an email from their staff saying they're working on it, and they wanna work on it, it's the land use separate. They're, they also have a lot of other things.
Well, whatever the communication was, I would just like to request that be forwarded to the commission.
Okay, I'll try to find it.
Thank you.
The very last thing I have is...
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I had a question, two questions on that, on that Canema matter. And this, Tony, this probably both of you would be appropriate people to ask this question. You had mentioned the issues with whatever happens to Blue Heron, about the transportation issues and difficulties that a zone change, for example, and the transportation would, 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 you know, be relevant to that. There's just a road that goes from Blue Heron to Canema, it's blocked off by cement barricades right now. But is there any possibility that to relieve whatever traffic issues will arise from rezoning and redeveloping that site, that that connection from Blue Heron to 99 could be made that way? Does it look like it would be wide enough for a two-way street? But there's...
If we didn't, well, you know, we'd have to do, we would end up doing a traffic compact study, and we would try to identify these routes. If it has to cross the railroad, I think the chances are slim to none that the railroad's gonna allow a cat grade crossing there. But it would be something we could pursue at that time, we'd have to look at all, how all the traffic works, and where it's going, and et cetera, so. But it's a possibility.
And the final thing is, I've been trying, Terry has been working, trying vigorously to get Blue Heron nailed on on making good on the offer they made me last week, which is to take you folks on a tour of the Beast, I think was their word. And so we've been trying to raise that, the only times we've found so far are that they're available for the tour are the same times we have our budget meetings next week. So that won't work, but we are still pursuing alternative dates for you, so we'll let you know when we get some progress there. And that's all I have.
What about your Comcast?
Oh, yes, I have something I'm gonna hand out. Commissioner Maum had a question about our Comcast, how we spend our franchise fees, and this is how we spend them right now. And we'll have more discussion in the hearings about this, and we also have a meeting with West Lynn coming up, so we can see if we can reach incentives with them on how much funding for sure that we will be providing next year. But this is a recent issue of the background, so hang on to this, you might wanna even put this in your budget book. It's not probably gonna be absolutely necessary for the budget discussion, but it could be helpful in just answering Commissioner Maum's question. And that is all I have.
Yeah, and, well, we discussed most of them, but I did another thought that occurs to me that I meant to bring up as a future agenda item, but it's in my mind, but now it's back, I can't raise it. City attorneys several months ago had written a legal opinion about, I think it's section 57 of the Charter, on when the issuance of debt requires a public vote, and the definition of debt in bonded indebtedness. It was quite a lengthy memo. And the conclusion of the memo was that the library, the Public Works, almost anything we do would almost undoubtedly have to go to a public vote. When we had our Urban Renewal 101 a couple of weeks ago, the woman from the Association of Oregon Urban Renewal Agencies indicated during that discussion that municipal bond underwriters in today's market are almost uniformly requiring urban renewal agencies to get the mother cities of the urban renewal agencies to backstop the issuance of municipal, of urban renewal bonds with the full faith and credit of the mother city. To me, that sounds not unlike like a general obligation bond, where you have to, you know, commit the full faith and credit of your city to initiate some of a bond like that. And that's potentially a very profound... And that's potentially a very profound problem or issue that I would rather address proactively than reactively. And I'd like to propose to the commission that we ask the city attorney to do a supplement or an amended memo on that to address that specific question that if, on whatever urban renewal project we do, we want to issue bonds and bond underwriters require that the, that the City of Oregon City backstop the issuance of those urban renewal agency bonds with the full faith and credit of Oregon City, whether that would require a public vote.
Isn't that what we asked Steve Jen to look into?
We never got a resolution to that. And because City Attorney, we asked the question, but we didn't get a commitment that he was going to look into it. And since the city attorney has already done the memo, it seems to me that he'd be the appropriate guy just to amend his memo.
Commissioner, can I, Commissioner Nocita?
Sure.
Would you, would you send me that question that you just posed in a written format? You're so good at doing. And I will, I will pass that on to him, because I, I really do want to make sure I get the gist of everything you're asking.
And I'll send the link to the Urban Renewal 101.
And Mr. Kabayama sent me, he sent me an email a couple of days ago. And I, I was actually, did not mean that in any disrespect, that want to say you're good at doing it, because you give me details. And that's the kind of thing that I think the attorney is going to need to know if he's going to respond. But Mr. Kabayama sent me an email a couple of days ago on this full faith and credit situation that I actually had, I wasn't sure if he was going to be here tonight, was going to ask him to just talk to you about it, rather than just forwarding an email, because I thought it might be more helpful. I'll take another look at that email, and I'll take a look at what you send me on this question.
Can you forward estimates?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. And if that's not responsive to the question that you posed, then we'll look into it further. It seems to be more, it's actually something that not only the city commission is going to want to know, but urban renewal is going to need to know at some point. And that's, unfortunately, that's one of the questions that came up in the discussion about public works. Because as Nancy said, the original plan for the site where it's at involved the city building a new facility in phases. It didn't require to borrow money. We could basically save up some money to start and then build it as you go. And that's one of the advantages of being at that place. If we go to a different place, we just have to figure out how we're going to get, how we're going to deal with that. You know, does it require a bond, does it require a vote for the debt and that sort of thing? So more fun ahead.
Question, it comes through the Verizon, the Verizon Tower, Tower of Pisten. Now, we got an email, I believe, from Nancy Cracher indicating that it really wasn't something that we want to do. Is, I just want to put it to that. Is that it, or is the commission going to be, is it going to come back with the commission?
Well, we advised Verizon that public works wouldn't be interested in forwarding that for any kind of approvals. So they may look at another site in the area, but not at the Boinkston, another site.
I just wanted to somebody, okay, thanks. Anything else?